Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Commission Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Vice Chair Wayne Benner and Commissioners Grant Simmons, Scott Torby, Reed Weber, Will Mitchell, and Ivan Remar is not in attendance tonight. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to be pleased against the United States of America in cheer for what is just has one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do Commissioners have any announcements or reports? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the consent calendar. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Banner, seconded by Commissioner Simmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes and consent calendar is approved. Next, we will proceed with matters from the public. If you would like to speak on a topic that pertinent to city business that is not included on the agenda now is your opportunity to do so. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign up form, please do so and hand it to staff. The forms are located on the table by the doors. If you're attending remotely and wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted on the wall just outside chambers entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Do not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff. Not be disorderly or disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the commission cannot take testimony on any specific planning or land use related matter or application outside of an official public hearing. As there are no public hearings on the agenda this evening, please hold testimony on those. I think I might have misread that. As there are public hearings on the agenda this evening, please hold testimony on those matters until the hearing is open. This time is for general comments and topics not included on the agenda for comments only. No questions or debate. You may contact the mayor or city staff during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak during the general comment time?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Any hands raised on Zoom?
No, Mr. Chair.
Well, that will conclude the general comment portion of the meeting, and we'll move on to our public hearing. Next is a public hearing and recommendation decision on amendments to City Code 7-3-10-H related to short plats. If you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand it to staff. We will begin with a staff presentation followed by Commissioner questions. Then we will open the hearing for public testimony. After the public hearing has been closed, we will proceed with commission deliberation and a recommendation decision. I will now yield the floor to City Engineer Brandon Stagland. If he is ready.
Sorry, I'm trying to. I'm trying to share my screen. Okay, sorry about that. Brandon Stagland, City Engineer. This item you may be familiar with because I brought it to you a couple of months ago packaged with changes to another section of code. Staff decided after that to separate those two code sections into their own items. So I will provide a little bit more explanation about that at the end, but you're going to be familiar with this discussion as I go through it. What this proposed code amendment is, is a. Why is that not coming up? Anyway, what this code amendment is, is a is a change to Chapter 7-3-10-H in regard to using the sidewalk in Luffy program for short plats and lot line adjustments. So right now, what the code says in Chapter 10 is that when you do a short plat or a lot line adjustment, you are required to complete frontage improvements along all lots within the subdivision. And in Chapter 7, it specifically exempts currently in the code, it specifically exempts those short plats and lot line adjustments from electing to pay the in Luffy instead of actually building the sidewalk before final plat. So all this code change is doing is saying you can now use the in Luffy program for short plats and lot line adjustments, but not for full subdivisions under Title 10, Chapter 1. The other, the other time that we typically use the in Luffy program is typically under building permit. Right? So when they wrote that sidewalk in Luffy program, the, what it was intended for was we're only using this for sidewalk that's required as a condition of building permit instead of actually building the sidewalk. You can pay the in Luffy. The fee goes into a pot of money, and it has to be spent within that quarter section, that same quarter section on sidewalk in a place where it makes more sense. So this is the draft code change. And you saw that in your packet. And so in conclusion, my recommended action is that you approve amendments to Sandpoint City Code Section 7310-H. And so that's the end of the presentation on what the, what I'm agendizing tonight. But I did just want to mention that there are changes to Chapter, to Title, I'm sorry, to 10, that deal with the timing of public infrastructure improvements for short plats and lot line adjustments that I plan to bring to the next P and Z meeting as an agendized item as a separate vote. These two, the one that I'm bringing to you today and those changes to Title 10 are separate from each other and they, they can, they can be adopted or not adopted independently and not be affected by each other. So I just wanted to add that before we move on to questions and deliberation.
Okay, we'll now move on with the public hearing. Again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand it to staff. If you're on Zoom and wish to testify, you may raise your hand at this time. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow gifted time during a public hearing. I don't think that's going to be an issue here, so I'm going to skip on by that. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or are there any hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Molly O'Reilly.
Molly, would you like to speak?
Hi, I'm Molly O'Reilly, city resident. And I'm now a little confused about whether my comments include things you're not looking at tonight. I went off the agenda posted Friday. But the ordinance requiring sidewalks with short plats and I'll say lot line adjustments, but mainly short plats, is one of the two most significant ordinances we have in this city that has expanded, repaired, and connected sidewalks. And I, I have concerns about anything that diminishes what it is able to accomplish. We would not have a continuous sidewalk between Olive and Division on Ontario without the requirement that short plat require sidewalk. And you can ask me if you want details about why, but we, it wouldn't be there in, in a complete. And so I think this ordinance is really important for the comp plan and various aspects of it, but it hasn't been evaluated. The changes haven't been evaluated against the comp plan. And I think it's something that should be looked at really carefully by the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee. We have subcommittees, we're perfectly capable of spending some time and really looking at what will this mean if enacted? Will it mean that we have less connected built sidewalk? And then with building permits, you then require sidewalk. But if an occupancy permit is not needed, you may not get that sidewalk. It all depends on the occupancy permit. That's the only enforcement tool we have. If there's no mortgage, you'd, yeah, bye bye. And I can name at least three examples of sidewalks that were required that don't exist. One of them is on my own block. So before moving anything out of short plats to building permits, let's get a system that ensures that when something is built, the sidewalk actually is constructed. I suggested bonding. This is not an example that, this isn't an area of my expertise, except I do know that past and present staff have complained that they can't enforce it if somebody doesn't want to build it. We didn't have a mortgage, we wouldn't have had to do our sidewalk, it turns out. I love my sidewalk. I wouldn't be without it, but I'm exceptional that way. So I think this is not ready for you. I think this needs to go back and be looked at, and I think we need to bring with it a better system for ensuring that required sidewalks are actually built, enforceable. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, no one else has signed up?
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners may ask questions of staff at this time.
John, I have a question for. I'm not sure which staff, but are there, as just stated, are there exemptions from obtaining an occupancy permit before you occupy a home in this town? Does mortgage have anything to do with that?
So what the, what that public comment I was referring to is the, when you apply for a building permit, there's a, the code requires you build sidewalk, so you put a condition on the permit that says before the building official gives you a certificate of occupancy, the city engineer needs to sign off on the construction of the actual sidewalk and it has to be completed. That's the tool that we have to make sure it gets done. But there are some cases where people just choose not to get a certificate of occupancy. And a lot of times, the only entity that's enforcing it is a bank that has a lien on the property because they want to make sure that it has a certificate of occupancy if you own the home outright. Technically, the city could evict somebody, but we're, we just, that's not the process that anybody in the building department has ever followed. As you might imagine, the city is not going to go around when people are already living in houses and tell them they have to get out until they have a certificate of occupancy. That might change, but that's just not the. There's not really a whole lot of, I guess, will to go around and do that at this time. But I do want to add that the, the changes to Chapter 7 that are before you right now are. They, they do, they are affected by certificate of occupancy because the option of paying this fee is kind of like a stand in for completing the sidewalk to city inspection. So you have to, so the condition of the building permit would be you have to pay this fee before we'll give you the certificate of occupancy. That's the mechanism that we use. So again, somebody could get invoiced for an in Luffy and then decide not to get a certificate of occupancy, get their building permit, never close it out with the building official. And there's not really a mechanism to require them to pay it.
Could you modify the sequence so that the in Luffy would be paid at the time of the building permit?
You could, yeah.
And the only changes that you are proposing to this section of code is to enable the city to, at their discretion, to levy and to, to receive an in Luffy in lieu of construction, correct?
That's right. So again, we're typically using the in Luffy for building permits, but what this proposes is that you can use it for short plats and lot line adjustments. Right now, the current code very clearly says you cannot use this in Luffy for the required improvements associated with any subdivision, a lot line adjustment and a short plats as a type of subdivision.
You're expanding that provision.
That's correct, yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Could you kind of, this was brought up based on that development that's next to, I can't remember, off Division, Maplewood Village, right? The palace wanted to section off one square acre.
Yeah.
So I mean, could you like talk about it in a more abstract terms? Like to Mrs. Riley's point, like how, how many of these would you expect in a year? And how many sidewalks would then be unbuilt? And how much is the fee in general per, like is it, how is the fee assessed?
The, the fee is $60 per lineal foot. It used to be $140 per lineal foot. It was reduced two years ago, I believe, by council as part of the annual fee update. In order to bring it closer in line with what it would cost for somebody to hire a contractor to build sidewalk in front of their house. And the other part of your question was, remind me again.
How many, how many lineal feet of sidewalk do you expect to go unbuilt?
Oh, I, it'd be really hard to estimate that. I mean, I don't even know how many short plat applications we get a year. And I don't know how many of those would be appropriate to use the in Luffy for, you know, there's a lot of short plats where there's sidewalk on either side of the two lots that they're trying to split into two. For example, we're not going to let them use the in Luffy. You have to build the sidewalk in order to do that if it connects to the network. The point of the in Luffy program is so if you're out in the middle of nowhere and there's not sidewalk for two blocks in either direction, we're not going to make you build 50 feet of sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything. You just pay the in Luffy and we build it in a place where it makes more sense.
Commissioner Weber.
Follow up on that question, do we have like a set of written standards for how you evaluate when an in Luffy would be considered?
We do not. It's really tough to gauge all, all different situations. And when you, you know, when you start digging into these, there's, you know, a lot of different moving parts and variables in the equation. And we, we had kind of discussed considering having a flow chart or something and it kind of got out of control. So what I'm proposing is that it's just at the direction of the Public Works Director, whether you use the in Luffy or not. So staff decides whether it's appropriate to build sidewalk there or put it in the in Luffy pot of money and build it in a more appropriate location.
And would you say if staff's discretion would be driven by the comp plan? And how they make these decisions then? Or is, like you said, there's a lot of different factors, but like what's the kind of driving force behind these considerations? Is it about grid connectivity, is it about?
Well, we always have the comp plan in mind when making, you know, whenever it's applicable. But I would say the driving force behind how the decision gets made is will it connect to the network? If building sidewalk adjacent to a lot will connect to the existing sidewalk network, then they build the sidewalk. If it won't connect to the existing sidewalk network, then we do an in Luffy. That's the best explanation I can provide for that.
Chairman.
Commissioner Torby.
Another question. So with that in mind, the example that was given was along Ontario by the commenter. And the concern was that if this provision was in code at that time, I think the conclusion drawn by the person commenting would be that there would be no sidewalk there. There'd be this blank space. Now, that would be at the discretion of, as proposed, the Public Works Director, whether the requirement for a sidewalk would go in or an in Luffy would be paid and some sidewalk would be built somewhere else, right? So what do you think, based on what you know, what would you think would be the decision using that as an example? Would a sidewalk have been required if this provision was in code at the time? Or would an in Luffy be allowed?
Well, I don't, I don't know. Again, there's so many moving parts. I don't know where the sidewalk was when that plat happened. I mean, I wasn't here. I don't know where the existing sidewalk was.
Okay.
I don't know what it would have connected to, but my inclination is, yeah, they still would have had to build sidewalk. Because you know, if there wasn't sidewalk on, you know, the entire corner lot that the Lutheran Church sits on, and there wasn't sidewalk on all of Division, then they would have paid the in Luffy. But I don't think that that short plat on Ontario built all the sidewalk on four blocks of Olive and the two blocks of Division between the highway and, you know, South Division. I find that hard to believe.
Commissioners, any more discussion?
Well, I don't know. I know this.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I took a big bite of protein bar over here, just trying to choke it down before you closed it. So I don't know whether I'm thinking this right or not. We don't throw it out there and see what folks think, but it was Molly's submission pre this meeting that made me think like, if a goal is to have pedestrian interconnectivity within the city limits, does this sort of weaken one of the few tools that actually get sidewalks built? I don't know if that's actually the case or not, if you think of it, if you just sort of swing out a little bit. Or do the in Lufis always go to expanding the already connected network? Is that, am I even thinking of that right?
The in Lufis always go to building pedestrian pathways, sidewalk and you can, we, I don't know, we haven't done it yet, but I would make the case that you could use it for a multi-use trail as well. But it doesn't go to building curb or stormwater or anything else like that. So it's, it's going to be, you got to think of it as you're still getting the sidewalk, you're just getting it at a later date in a more appropriate location.
Commissioner Torby.
I got to follow up on that. So last week, we talked about impact fees. And when someone builds a home, let's just use that as an example, they pay an impact fee for trails, you know, the, not sidewalks, but these trails that I think you were just referring to, those other things that people walk on, but they're not sidewalks, like the bike trails and blah, blah, blah. Is that what you refer to, those trails?
I'm referring to multi-use trails within the public right of it and not, not trails on park property.
Oh, I'm not sure. You know what I'm getting at? Anybody over there?
Very specific statutory framework for which that they can be used. So I, I don't hear Brandon to be intermixing those two uses here, but maybe your question could be more specific.
Well, I, it sounded like, it sounded like that the in Luffy for sidewalks, which is what I understood this to be, could be used for something else called.
What he said is it's never been done. He may make an argument for it. Nobody here is saying that argument would be successful at this point.
Okay, because it, my concern was people would be paying for it twice.
It's, it's sidewalk in Lufis is all you're talking about here today.
Okay, got it.
I just have one question. So if somebody does opt to do the in Luffy and then at a later date, but there is development on the, on those properties, they still have to build a sidewalk on those properties, right?
No. So paying the in Luffy is like equivalent to building a sidewalk along your frontage. Once you've paid it, you've absolved yourself of the responsibility under that. Well, under that building permit, or in the case of passing this code, you'd absolve yourself of that responsibility under the short plat action. So I, that's, that's kind of how I look at it is like, once you pay the in Luffy, then it's, it's equivalent to building the sidewalk. You don't have to pay it every time you come in with a new application.
So if it's just in, just for the short plat process, not for a building permit, isn't that a separate action?
But Brandon, possibly give them an example of short plat application to carve a single lot into two, and then those two separate lots come forward at a later date with a building permit application. What happens?
If they pay the in Luffy.
If they pay the in Luffy.
Okay, so what would happen is they'd go through the short plat process. A condition of going to final plat would be that they pay the in Luffy. Say they pay the in Luffy, no sidewalk gets built, but it goes into the fund. Then a year later, they come back and apply for a building permit on one of the empty created lots. It's not spelled out in code, but the way I would treat it is you already paid the in Luffy for frontage improvements one time. You're not going to have to pay the in Luffy and build sidewalk or pay the in Luffy twice. That is paying for it twice. But again, I don't think that that's spelled out anywhere in code.
Can I ask a follow up?
Yeah, Commissioner Mitchell.
So I mean, a lot of times people are doing short plats in order to sell part of it, right? So what if you, so what happens to, you know, say I've got a lot I want to split into, subdivide, sell that, and I pay the in Luffy for that subdivision or for that short plating, and then I sell the other lot. So does the in Luffy follow that sale? I mean, does it, does it follow the RPS or?
Yep. So it gets, it gets put into the file in our filing system, which is tied to the RPS, to the parcel number. So when they came in and applied for a building permit, that record will, should be in the file tied to that parcel number when staff reviews that future building permit, whenever that may be. And, you know, also, if I were the, the owner. And a, a, you know, also, um, i- if I were the, the, the owner splitting a lot and I paid that in Lufi, I would keep records of it. Um, personally, just so that I could prove that I already paid it. So part of the responsibility would be on the, on the property owner.
I, I think what he's getting at is property changes hands and it's in the new owner's hands.
Understood.
And so are you saying that it's the intention for the in Lufi when paid on a short plat to run with the land? It runs with the parcel number.
Yes. But that is the intention, but again, it's not spelled out anywhere in code, either existing code or what I'm proposing here.
Commissioner Torby.
Is there, uh, did I miss it? Is there a place where it says when the in Lufi is, is payable in, in the code?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to, I'd have to look it up.
Cuz back to something I asked, and you said it's possible, but it's not, I don't think it's the practice now, is to pay the in Lufi. Um, if it's agreeable with the public works director at the time of issuing the building permit, it's sort of like.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
H one says that the sidewalk fee in lieu of construction is required and shall be paid in full prior to issuance of a construction permit. So that's the timing.
Okay.
If I have a question, might just.
Commissioner Weber.
Um, I think, I think there are cases where this could be used and really like unique areas. Like maybe dead end of a road where it's serving two lots. But it doesn't seem like, I don't think it should really be utilized in any other case beyond that. Cuz if you're looking at even two lots or four lots even in an unconnected neighborhood, that's a substantial amount of sidewalk. I just think, yeah, it's for that not to go in. And I get that there's the in lieu and that it fee, and then it could go to like a larger path of sidewalk at a future unknown date. But this is like an immediate mechanism to build sidewalks in this neighborhood incrementally. It just seems like this should be rare, rarely used. Um, a code amendment or like rarely utilized, but I don't know how to, you know, put that into the code itself without really knowing when or how or what are the factors considered? So.
Yeah.
Some thoughts.
I, I guess.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, thank you. Is, and I say this solely as a stakeholder who benefits from this code such that if I have to pull a permit, I'm gonna have to build a sidewalk where there should really be a sidewalk, right, on Ontario? But it, it just feels like I, like, I, I couldn't enumerate what the overall network that this is building. The in Lufi is going to, I, I don't know what that looks like. Uh, I, I'm sort of just viewing it as a weakening of one a few teeth to actually get sidewalks built. And if building pedestrian interconnectivity and maintaining that is important, is this overall weakening that? I don't know. And so luckily we have an advisory committee to sort of think through that. Uh, but I don't know whether putting this in front of them and thinking this through a little bit, if there's any sort of time criticality. Um, if that's even an option, but I would, I, I might, I might offer that as a potential sort of like, hmm, maybe we should pump the brakes a sec.
Commissioner Simmons, do I hear a motion?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion.
Uh, I motioned that we table this such that the pedestrian advisory committee takes a look and see if this makes sense relative to the comp plan and the broader vision of pedestrian interconnectivity.
Instead of a motion table, can we call it a motion to defer?
Oh, thank you.
This to the ped bike committee for comments and recommendations to bring back to you.
Uh, I will amend the motion to be a deferral motion to do thus already said.
Have a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Commissioner Simmons and seconded by Commissioner Weber. Uh, is this a roll call?
It will be, yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
No.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Torby?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
Thank you. Um, next on the next public hearing is a recommendation decision with proposed amendments to city code regarding off-street parking and loading facilities. Again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand to staff. We will begin with a staff presentation followed by a commissioner questions, then we'll open the hearing to public testimony. After the public hearing has been closed, we will proceed with commission deliberation and a recommended, recommendation decision. I will now yield the floor to city planner Bill Dean. If he's prepared. Looks like he's last minute deliberation.
I need commissioners for the record, building city planner. Um, we've been spending quite a bit of time with you this, this, uh, this year, beginning in January, talking about parking. Uh, led by Jason Walker's effort on the parking management plan. And we brought to you not too long ago, a draft of an overhaul of the, uh, of the off-street parking loading ordinance. So just before we get into looking at this um line by line together this evening. Really, what, what's inside this ordinance? What, what, what does this ordinance do, just in simpler terms, more layman's terms? And what is the proposed ordinance really, really achieve? And I've been able to do this with one um, simple list here. Really what your parking ordinance, I just wanna talk a little bit about what your parking ordinance does. Why do we have this? And then talk a little bit about what these changes are, and then we can get into the specifics and dive into it. But there's, there's a lot to a parking ordinance, right? When you, we actually list it out, there's, there's quite a bit there. Um, you know, the general applicability, um, it establishes that, you know, indeed there are requirements for parking. And it creates exemptions like this exempt area. Um, or an, an, an opportunity to present an analysis for some deviations. The ordinance talks about location spaces, you know, or how you could share those among businesses, for example. Um, the ordinance talks about access and maneuvering, setbacks and surfacing, maintenance, lighting, wheel block, signage, striping. All of these things are in there. So when you read through the red line ordinance, it can be confusing and difficult to understand, well, what exactly is being changed? I see some new language, but what, what effective standards are being changed? A lot of what the ordinance does is just try to remove redundancy. It tries to tighten up some of the, the terms that are used. And we'll walk you through where the actual big meaty changes are that actually you're gonna see an effect on the ground. Um, namely the, the, the expansion of the exempt area, for example. But the ordinance includes detailed landscaping standards, has dimensional requirements. Um, a minimum and maximum number um of parking spaces required. And it also includes the requirements for bicycles. So this is, it's a very short section of code that we're gonna spend a little bit of time talking about tonight. It also has loading uh standards for, for loading areas as well as the in Lufis. So the three big things that this ordinance really does is that creates requirements for off-street parking in commercial A for residential with an in lieu option. Okay, that hasn't been in the code um for, for some time. But through our recent discussions, through the parking management plan, um, there's a, this ordinance would create a new standard for residential development to require them to provide that parking at a, at a diminished rate compared to the rest of the city. Um, or pay an in Lufi. And this is, this is in keeping with the idea of um trying to move in the direction of um creating a future opportunity to build a structure once we get to that parking stress level that we've talked about in that parking management plan. So it adds that back in. It expands the exempt area of commercial, in, in commercial A to include some properties, about fourteen acres of property, about twenty-five, twenty-six parcels along Superior. Um, as you enter the city, it expands the exempt area uh into those areas. Additionally, this ordinance, in terms of the big picture, what it does is it re, it requires that alleys be paved when there is some intensification of development. And the ordinance specifies what we mean by that, like we talked about last time. If there's um a duplex plus an ADU or less, it's, you're not gonna be required to pave the alley. But as soon as you get into cottages and more intense development, um, you're gonna have to meet the paving standards, the hard surfacing standards. Um, the noteworthy exemptions from the performance standards um are listed. There's a lot of red lines in the code. But in terms of the access and maneuvering, there's really no effective change. We've changed some, some wording because uh the entire zoning ordinance really doesn't talk about density. Um, so there's one little provision on access and maneuvering, talked about when you were exempt from that and referred to a density calculation. We just converted that to be uh a, a six or fewer units, which was a similar density count, but using the terminology that you'd see in the rest of the code. Again, try to just make it easier to read. Um, as relates to the hard surfacing, right now there's two or fewer um units in residential zone plus the IG zone. Um, what we've done here is clarify that if you have an access, uh, you know, uh, that alley access duplex doesn't trigger the hard surfacing. It was really unclear in the code what actually would trigger the hard surfacing. We made it a very uh clear standard. Um, and then in the landscaping section, right now, single family homes and the IG zone are exempt from uh some landscaping standards. We've expanded that to include duplexes as well, just to make it easier to produce that type of housing in the community. And, and all of this, of course, we can go through line by line, but I just wanna give you sort of the at a glance, this is what it looks like. There's a lot of red on the, on the, on the, in the ordinance. Uh, we've shared that with you before. There, it's, it's slightly different than what you've seen before as we've been massaging it and working on it. But this is really, in essence, what it does. The current exempt area is shown here on this exhibit. And like I mentioned, this has been in place for a number of years. Right now, there's a, we distinguish between all uses being exempt, and then this is larger area for non-residential uses. We, we shift that to just being one area. That's been expanded, a little smaller, thank you. We've made the boundary a little easier to understand and it expanded it to include some, some additional um opportunity to see less off-street parking requirements as a function of permitting here um along that, that entryway to the city. Again, it adds about twenty-six park, roughly fourteen acres of property that would enjoy those new rules. Now I'm gonna ask Jason to show me how I can flip to the next PDF here.
Hey, can we ask questions now?
Yeah, why don't you ask some questions while we flip to the next.
Yeah, appreciate it. Commissioner Simmons, yeah, thank you. So um relative to that expansion, is that the only thing that's changing in that little zone? Or is it other things as well, such that it's gonna sort of encourage density?
That's the only change, I mean, as relates to parking. We're just talking today about the parking ordinance, and that's the only change that would be applicable there, the inclusion of that property.
Okay.
Yeah, all the other rules that we're talking about tonight obviously apply to development there as well. Um, but that's the, that's a, a sizable change.
And just, and just to clarify, that zone is all zoned commercial A.
Oh, it is. Oh, thank you.
That's all part of the commercial A.
That's right.
Oh, so, okay, so it sort of makes sense.
What's one of my tabs that are up? It's one of my, uh, listing down so I can see them.
It gets rid of the parking.
Oh, yeah, it's one of my, it's one of my open PDFs.
It makes them.
It's this one right here.
Yeah. It's another question.
Yeah. So Jason's gonna help me get the right screen. I have like, instead of doing a PowerPoint, I said, yeah, I'm gonna make it really easy tonight and do like sixteen PDFs. Well, that was a great idea. So nonetheless, we'll get through this.
The other question before we move on, the, let's say biking, the bike provision in Lufi. Does that go to building bike storage, et cetera, et cetera?
I'm glad you asked. What a great segue to, since we published the staff report, which was last week.
Yeah.
Um, I was made notice that city council actually took action in twenty sixteen by resolution sixteen dash oh five one, I think it was. Um, that adopted bicycle standards, uh bicycle parking standards. Now, what's interesting about these standards is that, uh, and we'll, we'll pull that up in the next PDF after, take a five minute break to figure out where it is. Um, we'll pull that up and we'll take a look at what those standards look like, but um, it's not really written in code format. It's, it's, it's a council adopted resolution that was worked on with the, with the ped bike committee at the time to create um these standards. Now, we would like to have those standards applied to development, yet reducing that to code language, I think is gonna uh be an unnecessary exercise. It's common for ordinances to point to design standards outside of your ordinance. Um, naturally that are, that are council approved. This happens a lot with engineering standards, for example. There's a lot of engineering specs you don't see in your, in your ordinances. They're just incorporated by reference. So what we're suggesting is in addition to what the uh agenda packet included. Um, tonight, should this move forward, we're, we're requesting that um that this additional red line that you see in our screen now be part of that ordinance that we take to city council. And what it does is basically um removes the content in the middle of that piece there that says bicycle spaces, about how many and how thick and how big of a, a stand. And say, just do it in accordance with the bicycle parking standards adopted by city council resolution. And that obviously may be amended from time to time, and it's a lot easier to amend that from time to time. I think our interest from a, a planning and zoning perspective is that um we're having adherence to these standards. And if the, if the, the nature of those standards are, are embodied in another document, that makes it easier to amend them and change with the, the, the flavor of the, of the, you know, the idea of what the best looking bike rack might look like. I think that's probably better left to council reso. But what's interesting, and to your point, Commissioner, is that the, the the way that the bicycle spaces are calculated is based on the required number. If you're an exempt area, well, then your, your number is zero. So how does a residential unit provide biking, bike parking if they're exempt? Um, so this little note to the planning and zoning commission says here, because bike spaces are required for residential land uses in the commercial A zone district. Even if in Lufis are paid, the minimum number of parking spaces for cars still applies, that number applies. This is important because the number of bicycle spaces is derived from the number of required spaces for cars for residential uses. So being located within the exempt area does not exempt the residential development from providing the bar, the bicycle parking spaces. I want this to be clear for legislative intent, should this move forward. We're trying to get bicycle parking um clarified with these standards, and I just wanna be clear for the record that should this move forward. It's the intent that residential uses are gonna provide bike parking, whether or not they do the in lieu for, for the vehicle.
Commissioner Mitchell.
The, but the way that this is written, it sounds like it's the, it's the number of resident, it's the number of parking spaces required after the buydown, is that, or is the, the, what?
So there's a, so I wanna, I'll walk you through it. So an, an application comes in for development of a certain um size. Based on the size that residential uses, there're gonna be a certain number of required parking spaces. Um, that parking space number is used for vehicles, is used to determine the number of bicycle parking spaces. You've got to provide it, whether or not you and, you, you decide to avail yourself of the in Lufi.
Okay.
For the vehicle. Does that make sense?
Calculated before the in Lufi.
That's correct. That's exactly right. So the legislative intent here is, is that we're gonna add and improve a number of things. One, the fact you're going to do bike, bike parking, no matter what, for residential use. And number two, you're gonna adhere to the standards that have already been adopted by council that naturally were buried someplace that nobody really was using, or I should say, using consistently. Um, by having this, this reference in the code, it really provides that easy link. Plus, we can put it on our website. Um, as a side note, I think as we move forward with other standards throughout the city, where there's design guidelines for this or store preservation for that. That's a tool that I think is gonna be um increasingly important to just uh be comfortable with incorporating by reference certain standards that really aren't suited to be put into zoning ordinance, like the um, an image of a type of bike parking rack versus, one versus the other. Um, that's much better suited for, for a, a design guideline manual. So with that sidebar, um, I'm gonna pull up the ordinance itself with Jason's help to figure out, oh, can I do it now? Thank you, Jason. You're so good at this. Let's take a look. By the way, this is the, these are the minutes from that meeting, uh, city council. Um, we'll put these on our website too as part of this packet as a follow up. These, these are the minutes from that meeting that happened in twenty sixteen. Um, it's fascinating, you know, going through this conversation back then. And here's the actual resolution sixteen um fifty-one, it's sixteen dash fifty-one, done in July of twenty sixteen. And includes these standards. Here's an example of what I'm talking about. These are not the types of images you see in a zoning ordinance. Um, but they're perfectly suited to be located um someplace else. So I think if this, if this um needs refreshing, that'll go to the ped bike committee and then on the city council with a resolution. You can rest assured that your work includes the fact that you gotta adhere to it um by virtue of the, the previous slide I had on the screen. So.
So just, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simmons.
So even if the, I guess for lack of a better term, even if the standards, like the pencil needs some sharpening around them, we can still say, hey, look, we have, there needs to be some sort of standard set to be able to make this defensible. Is that sort, do I think about that right?
Can you say that a little bit differently?
Meaning, even though if we just read that language, it points to standards.
Yes.
That have been said.
Correct.
But how much do those standards themselves exist and need to be defined?
Well, let's take a look at them because they're pretty robust. And if they need to be refined, I think that that's, I mean, that's worth, that's worth talking about here. So the trade-off is, we try to reduce what we see here to zoning code language. Right? And I think for this, the way I look at this right here in front of this, in front of you, we have the bicycle rack features. I think this particular bullet item is very difficult to put in a zoning ordinance. Sharp edges, it's gotta be designed to accommodate this, that, the other, has his images of what's preferred. The stuff that's on page two here, bike rack replacement orientation and clearance in the public right-of-way, I think is easier to put in a zoning ordinance, but now that this has been recently discovered again, what, what I, what I'd like to do is work with Jason and Brandon to see if this needs to be, you know, and our engineers to see if there's any conflicts between this and ADA, if there's anything engineering wise, we briefly reviewed it. But in the end, I think that this is a type of thing that probably best resides outside the zoning ordinance. That, that's just, that's, that's what my experience is telling me that this could get, this could get, this could get complicated. I think, for example, recent applications we've talked about, whether it's a CUP here or a site plan review there, we've talked in, in generalities about the number and location, right? So that's really, that's really what comes up in these, in these conversations. It doesn't mean that shouldn't application come forward, like say for a CUP for a residential use someplace, that's got a 20 or 30 required spaces. It doesn't mean that our conversation and the process of making findings can't rely on this. Indeed, it should, because this is a council adopted standard. We can fold that into our discussion and deliberation with the commission as that comes forward. These standards can be relied on.
I think you're looking at amending those standards here tonight.
Not tonight. Yeah, I think that this has been recently discovered. I just wanted to, to make it, I think, more effective. The, the sentence I suggested early on the screen about making the reference to this is going to put this back on everybody's radar, because it's gonna be in our zoning ordinance. Now, that doesn't mean there's not more work to do to look at this again and new and have the, the Ped Bike Committee maybe refresh it and then bring it back. And on top of all that, should we have an application, then we want to get into these details when it comes to commission for the specifics, by all means, this is part of the review process and it's a standard that we can look at to say, is, are we meeting this such that the findings can be made? Yeah. Does that, does that help?
Yes.
Okay. Because if not, let's, let's talk about it. I want to make sure this stuff is, is clear. I don't like to rush zoning stuff.
Can I ask just another quick, two questions, really, two quick ones on bicycles, now that we're on it? First question is, why is there a ratio of four to 20 instead of one to five? And what happens when you have 10 parking spaces or 39 parking spaces?
This is why engineers don't do planning and planning don't do engineering. No. Because some people are really good at numbers and others are terrible at it. That's a great question and that absolutely could be changed however the commission sees fit.
Then the other, then the other is, did I read this right? That if there is no parking requirement for non-residential uses within the, within the exempt area, then there, therefore, there is no bicycle parking requirement as well?
Just the opposite.
Oh.
Because it's non-residential.
That's true.
For non-residential.
I'm talking about for non-residential.
Oh, okay. I thought you said residential.
No, for not, so I say, I have a business.
That's, that's true today. That's correct.
So it presumes that no one is gonna go to that business on their bicycle? And I wonder why that.
I don't know if it, if it presumes that. That's what the ordinance states. I'm not sure. I can't, I can't, that's a fair assumption of what, what might have gone into it. It's a complete, it's a complete exemption from the requirements is what it is. And if commission desires to, to modify that, to, to make sure that bikes are not exempt from that requirement, we can have that discussion by all means.
Okay, well, I, I wondered if y'all knew.
You're, you're right.
It just seemed a little odd. I mean, you know.
Well, that's, that's precisely why we're doing this. Like, like, like I mentioned, this is a, this is a, this really stemmed from the parking management study. And once you lift the lid on an ordinance like parking, it's, it's hard not to do little cleanups here and there, which led to, you know, lots of discussion during, given the applicant load that we were looking at, saying, well, let's just take this a little more holistically and make some changes. So by all means, if there are some things here that, given the fact we've taken the lid off off-street parking loading, if we want to make some additional refinements, that's what we're here for.
May I comment on that, Bill? So just keep in mind that that parking exempt zone for non-residential is that kind of commercial core of downtown. And when you take into consideration like the, the nature and form of downtown development with regards to zero setbacks, the, the, the use of land downtown, bicycle parking requirements, putting that on the, the private developer as opposed to making that a, 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 you know, a realm of, of local government, that's kind of how we treat bicycle parking downtown right now. And that's not to say that we're doing a particularly good job of providing bicycle parking in the public realm. But, but if you walk, and I actually just did this informally the weekend before last, walked about, you know, several blocks around the farmer's market and did a little survey of, of the bicycle parking that is available in the public right-of-way. And we have a lot of improvement to do, but the presumption is that there will be available bicycle parking in front of downtown businesses in the public right-of-way provided by the city. Not that businesses, otherwise you have just all sorts of different bike racks being put out in front of businesses on public sidewalks. We have our own standards. We want to.
Okay.
Add that bicycle parking.
And I'll, and I'll, I'll further it a little bit. So again, when you're talking about downtown, we have to, it, it's hard, but we need to remove ourselves from looking at this as development by development and understand that certain aspects of a downtown have to be viewed in terms of a district. And that's really the thrust of what this parking management plan has been all about. It's like, how does a district perform? How can we make the district better perform? And this ordinance is trying to contribute, obviously, toward implementing that parking management plan and recognizing that the ordinance has a role i- in, in terms of the specific regulations, such that this district can better perform. And if you require the next wine bar or office building to put bicycle parking, really, I think that conversation should be had in understanding what's currently in the district, right? Just like we're doing with off-street parking spaces for vehicles. Right now, we have a zero-foot setback in front. Do we really want to see that change so we could have, you know, three bike, you know, spaces in front? Probably not. Does that mean it happens in the rear? Well, now you're taking up leasable floor area that may, that may be, you know, on the margins, whether the pencil can, the project can pencil or not. So there's a lot that goes into it, just from the cost of building perspective, what, what the space is required. Or do you require it to be indoors? Well, now you're talking about floor plan changes that might have an effect on, you know, perspective, you know, restaurants intentions. So again, how you get to downtown and how you experience putting your vehicle, whether it's a bike or whether it's a vehicle, that's a district problem and predominantly a, a city thing to manage. Not necessarily something you want to, you put on the, on the, on the, on the private developer. That's the whole nature of the in-lu fee program for vehicles, for vehicles as well.
Mr. Mitchell.
So now, like on first, I have, you have the staple bike racks. So imagine you, I mean, to switch it a little bit from Commissioner Torpey's question, like, like, for instance, what if I wanted to, in front of our business, add another staple rack? How, how does that happen?
You mean in the city right-of-way?
Yeah.
You'd contact the city. We'd put you in touch with the city engineer and the streets department and probably the, the parks maintenance crew, which actually maintains the, the public rights of way downtown. And we coordinate on what the rack, what rack options you would have. We'd probably see if we had any available in our inventory, because I, as I understand it, we actually have quite a few of those staple racks in our city shop that just were never installed. I'm trying to actually activate some of those and get them out on the streets right now, because I, I do think there's a need for more bike racks along First and Second avenues in particular.
I mean, I guess my question is like, not like the.
No, that's not the type of thing. You would, you know, yeah. You, you would not be invited just to go out and put any bike rack you want that had conformed with our standards. That would be a public bike rack that we would install.
Okay.
But if you, if you want to request.
And you can, and does the develop, I mean, does that person pay for the installation?
No, those, those sidewalk improvements are a city, that's the city, city's realm.
Okay.
Uh, just a reminder, when we're talking, we all need to be into the mic very well, including everybody in the room. Thank you. And Bill, we can move on, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
So what I'd like to do now is walk you through and really just respond to your questions that you might see on this red line. The, your, your packet includes this red line. It's, it's the entire ordinance. So, you know, top to bottom. We've talked about this before. We've, we've looked at this before. This is a little bit different than what you, what you saw last time. Just some, some simple refinements. I, I did make some refinements to, to B and C here from the last time we spoke. The last time we spoke, I think I had those things completely stricken out. But I, I reread things and thought about it some more and decided to retain the language and just, and just clean it up a little bit to make it a little easier to understand about when, when these provisions apply. One thing I thought that was important was that if, if we're gonna do a parking demand analysis, that that, you know, the relevant permit authority, whoever's evaluating that is the one that acts on it. It's not, it's not such that you can have a planning commission issue with CUP and then later a administrative decision to do a parking demand analysis. And that was something we talked about, that we, that this change would basically, you know, correlate the approval level with, for the demand analysis with the permit itself, which I think is appropriate. We talked about the exemptions. We're expanding the exempt boundaries and we're adding in the requirement for for residential uses to, to either pay the in-lu fee or park, albeit at a reduced rate per unit. It's now per square footage. Cleanup language here on 953 is really cleanup language. The staff report includes a page that describes each one of these sections and essentially a little snapshot of what it does. Just in a sentence or two, what, what do we do to 953? It's just, this is just cleanup language. What do we do to 954? This, this was what I mentioned earlier. We have this, the strikeout language says, residential uses with a density of less than 10 units per acre are exempt from this requirement. We don't really see that calculation anywhere and that can be a difficult and argued over calculation to make. So we just decided to simplify it. Development of six or fewer units on a site.
Chairman. Commissioner Torpey.
I'd like to go back to the shared parking ordinance changes and ask the question, start with asking the question. Are there any developments in the exempt area that have shared parking agreements right now? Has this been exercised, has this provision been exercised?
In the exempt area? You wouldn't need a shared parking agreement in the exempt area.
Yeah, you wouldn't need one in the exempt.
Okay, anywhere.
There are potential shared parking agreements.
Yes, I'll give you an example. There's an example on Ridley Village Road. There's a, the old Department of Labor building that is now utilized by, I think, a medical office use and a church. And there's a nearby school and they have overlapping hours, overlapping scenarios such that they met the code requirement to engage in a joint use where one property owner encumbers their property with an easement for the benefit of the joining property for access and reciprocal parking. So it is, it is, it is used.
Has, has it been used for residential parking requirements anywhere?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't, I mean, I'm still the newcomer on the block. Are you aware of any?
No, not aware of any.
No.
I mean.
Brandon may be aware if there's.
No, not residential, but I just had one other example. The, the new Bonner County MS building did a shared parking agreement with the main federal building across the street in order to get that permitted. So, because if you've noticed that parking lot only has, has very few parking spaces and they needed to share those two facilities in order to make it work.
Okay. And I, I wish I had written it down, but I wonder if you could tell me, Bill, does, does the shared parking provision require the approval of, is it at the discretion of the city and some, someone, some staff at the city or the approving authority as listed up there?
So how this works, let, let's just put this in a real context. I think that might help answer your question. If not, we'll, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep talking about, because I want to make sure you're, you're fully satisfied with, with understanding it. So we, we create these requirements and these things have been around for a long time, that you have to have this many parking spaces. But there's a lot of ways that we can minimize building parking lots. One of those is through shared parking reductions. You can have one use that's located next to another use that has offsetting hours, for example. Well, different types of uses may be able to share. So in order to, to, to receive approval for that, and able to, in order to not provide the full complement of parking spaces that what your land use requires, and in order to use this provision, you have to get approval by the city for that. You can't just submit an application and say, well, I'm, I'm only gonna do five parking spaces because I'm gonna use, you know, my neighbors next door. It's like, well, we have to have that recorded. And so staff looks at that and reviews it to make sure you meet this, you know, what's outlined in the ordinance. So as a practical matter, those, those are talked about with the land developer, the applicant, what can be done. They contact enjoying property owner, how this might work. And then what we're adding into the language here is that who approves this is whoever approves the permit. If we have a site plan review permit, that's a, that's at the director's level and there's a shared parking reduction, that approval will be baked into the site plan review approval. If it goes to commission, it'll be, it'll be assigned there. And then.
Mr. Mitchell.
And so sorry to like keep hypothetically asking, what happens if you have a shared agreement with an undeveloped piece of land? Say the, whatever the old, I think, in between First and Second on Church Street. There's a old pet grooming in flower store. It's empty. Say I want to develop something and I get a shared agreement with them and then, then GBD decides to develop it.
Well, you have, you have an agreement. That, that has to be, that's a recorded agreement. It raises, it raises questions when the developing parcel wants to come in, they have this commitment to provide the parking for the, the use that, that took advantage of it. I'd have to think through exactly what would happen in that scenario. That would be, that would be a difficult, well, first of all, they're in an exempt area.
The recorded agreement for shared parking is going to run with the land. So any development of the currently undeveloped site is going to have to accommodate that easement and that parking.
Keep in mind, I think what Commissioner Mitchell might be referring to is more like a handshake agreement, like the, the owner said we could park our cars there. That's completely different because there's no parking requirement in that zone anyway. So in no circumstances would a shared parking agreement ever be required.
That's right.
Part of town. So if, if, if a adjacent commercial use has an agreement to use that parking lot until which time it gets developed, that's completely different than a shared parking agreement in this context.
Yeah, and this, this is a formal action. You can see by 953D, right there on the screen, you know, the documentation required. This has to be a, a written agreement. It's approved by the, the director as to its contents, has to get recorded. So it's not an informal thing. It's a, it's a formal thing. But, but Commissioner Torpey, I want to make sure you're answering your questions. I'm not sure if I have.
Well, you're on to something. The other thing that I don't understand, and that is with these provisions written into the deed of the property being used as the shared parking space between the owner of that property and the person who needs that parking space, right? I mean, that's, that's the agreement. So there's this thing running with the land.
Yes.
And there's this other guy who's paying money for that.
Presumably, right.
We don't know how much or when or how often or whatever. So I, I believe that you can change things that are on property deeds. How, what is the mechanism? So the city?
What's to prevent, what's to prevent after they get their permit, both parties decide to unrecord the agreement?
I was just fooling. Yeah. And the money that I, all that money that I, if I said I was paying you, I'm not doing it anymore. You know, whatever.
You, you know, it's, it's, in that case, what, what'll happen is, is, is it's sort of a complaint-based scenario, right? If somebody complains and we're made aware of it, we'd have to start unpacking that and on, and. If somebody complains and we're made aware of it, we'd have to start unpacking that and on, and, and, and go through that process. You know, if, if, for example, it was a conditional use permit, which is a, a substantial permit and this was a condition of approval in that we found that this was on, this bell was on rung by the property owners acting that way. The, the planning commission has remedies by, by, uh, you know, being able to call the permit back up because it's, it's, you're not compliant with the conditions. And then you can go through a process there. So in a CUP setting, there's a little bit of a, uh, there, there, there's some context there for the commission to hold the, um, these, the, the, the permit holder accountable. Um, in a site plan review, it's a little less likely that that would be the case. Because there's no real revocation of a site plan permit, but a use permit is a land use thing, right? You could just put an end to somebody's ability to operate, um, if they weren't in violation of the conditions. So the CUP is, it's got a little bit more teeth than a site plan review. You're raising good questions and I, and I've never seen it, but it doesn't mean it can't, couldn't happen.
Well, it's just that, you know, we're about to monetize by, by issuing a, by creating a fee for a residential parking permit in town. Eighty bucks a month, maybe.
Right.
If it goes through, thousand bucks a year forever per parking spot. That, that is a lot of money.
Right.
I mean, forever, right? Thousand bucks a year for per parking space. And so.
Right.
It seems to me there might be a lot of incentives to try to avoid that somehow. By, by pretending that you're sharing parking. And I was just wondering what sort of mechanisms we have.
So this zoning code is about urban form, right? And a, a lot of it is land use and urban form. So really what this objective is, is to reduce that surface parking where it's really not needed. It's inefficient land use. You can't develop that property, don't get the tax base off it. You can't see the buildings come up. Can't implement the general plan or comp plan the way you, you're thinking of. So th- that's what this is about. We can't regulate bad behavior. Okay? We have these other tools and toolkit. If somebody breaks some rules, we'd have to peel that onion and, and, and decide to what degree we ratchet up the rhetoric, um, from city hall regarding the non-compliance with something like that. It's just, you, you, you can't, people speed. And you know what? Every now and again, they get pulled over. Um, and that's, that's just, that's the way it works. I can't put, it, it's difficult to put in a zoning ordinance, regulations that get at the bad behavior. And that's really how I categorize that.
Okay.
You know, you see what I mean? But I see your point. This goes into such specificity that the performance means you have to be within a thousand feet of each other. So if I were a downtown residential developer and I was faced with paying this fee and I could come up otherwise with a solution, I'd pursue it, right? I don't know if that's going to be really available to ma- too many, too many parties. But again, when you get into that situation, you're thinking about the zoning ordinance, default to urban form and you're thinking, what are we trying to see built? The built environment is what we're regulating here. That's what you should bring your, yourself first. And there's all, and I encourage you that as we look at any ordinance and things, just default, it's a built environment we're regulating. Not, not the, the behavior of people who are participating in it.
Is the shared parking agreement that must be approved by your planning director can include language that says it's being entered into as a condition of meeting a parking requirement for applicant X, Y, Z for whatever A, B, C permit. And it can say that this agreement shall not be terminated without notice and approval by the city of standpoint.
There you go.
Yeah. We can add that, this code provides for utilizing that shared parking agreement, um, document because the planning director has to approve it to build in the language that protects the city at that point.
Okay. Sounds, that sounds great. Thank you. Sounds great. So let's, let's put a, a pin in that one because, um, I'm going to call that attorney language for nine five three.
It is. And I think it's also be mindful as Bill continues his amendments. This section is a great example of you already have it in here. You already had it in here. He's not doing anything to it other than a little cleanup.
Yeah. But I want to encourage you to read it holistically, the entire, every word of it. Because now is, since we are taking a little off this thing, now is the time and we, with fresh eyes, you see, you see things differently. So I think that's a great point. And I'm writing down a little note here. And I, there was another point that came up a few minutes ago about, um, what was in the biking, bicycle parking context that, should this thing move forward, we might want to, revisit exactly what it is you're recommending. So could we go on to nine five four? Are we ready, ready to do that? Cause I don't, do not want to rush you, but I, I do also want to get through this. But you know, I don't want to keep you here forever tonight. Access and maneuvering.
Sorry, good. Comment on this.
Mr. Weber.
Stall it off again here.
Reading through this, maybe this is just my interpretation and, and that kind of cleanup category to talk about this. Thought that it could be interpreted in a different way. Um, it talks about specific, basically you have to be moving in a forward motion from residential uses is required. I'm sorry, is not, is exempt. But my, it's just a scenario here and a commercial property, even though it's not required, but they decide to put parking in an alley, for example, behind their building, are they then required to have, to move in a forward motion from?
Well, let's, let's just read it together. Any parking area must be designed in such a manner that any vehicle entering or leaving the parking area from around to the public or private street must be traveling in a forward motion. Is that clear? Okay. So let's read the next sentence and see if the next sentence is clear. Development of six or fewer units on a site, including single family homes, duplexes, multifamily dwellings and accessory dwelling units are exempt from this requirement. Is that clear?
Right.
Are we, so this is how we have to read it, right? Are we, so, so far do we understand? You're moving in a forward direction. There you go. Unless you're this, then you don't have to do that. So we, we want to see if we're clear on that first. Hey, then let's go on to the next piece. But you're not clear. So.
Well, what's not clear to me is if it's a commercial use, you have to be driving out of.
Does it say that commercial uses are exempt?
No.
Okay. Are we clear?
Clear.
Got it.
So.
That's, that's how you read zoning.
Okay. And so I'm in the scenario here are all of the lots that have parking in the alley currently where you just pull directly in into commercial use and you are backing out directly. That wouldn't be, you're saying that's not allowed anymore with this code change?
The current language has been used. It specifically talks about residential development where, where this, I think, is most applicable is when you have like a cottage development that wants to load off an alley. Um, or a multifamily that wants to load off an alley. Um, you're doing, uh, what is it? Six or fewer? You don't have to move in a, in a forward motion because there's really, you would, you would be incongruous with your, um, cottage ordinance. You'd be incongruous with some aspects of the comp plan, trying to encourage development of these sites. In a commercial setting, there's really no parking back there anyway. Cause these lots are, are covered by and large, fully covered. So the, the, the amount of truly alley parking is very limited. Um, I can't think of, uh.
Bill, can you clarify for the sake of this ordinance, is an alley considered a public street?
An alley is not considered a public street.
Answers Reed's question right there.
Yeah. So if you're talking about an alley and, and alley is not a, a public or private street.
Okay.
And, and, and that's a, I'm glad you brought that up because we have a provision you'll see later that we added here that says for the purposes of this chapter, an alley is not a public street. One, one of the things I read over the last several months is, and I wrote down on my whiteboard, you know, is an alley a, is an alley an alley or is an alley a public street? And depending on which code section I read, I get a different answer. So I'm like, okay, we gotta, we gotta clean this up. So, um, this is an attempt to clean that up. Very good question.
Thank you. Okay.
But that's how, that's how you have to read it. Um, so I think we're going to move on to minimum distance and setbacks, five, five. This is just be, be removing the ambiguity and saying, we're going to follow an engineering standard for, um, for, for distance, uh, obstructions. And that's the common language that, um, we thank Brandon Staglin for providing to us. Hard surfacing made a few changes. Basically, we're defining hard surfacing as asphalt pavement, concrete pavement, or otherwise determined by the, the city engineer. Here's another example where this is ripe for, uh, a set of standards to be, uh, developed by this, the engineering team and public works team based on what works in standpoint. This has got to be, you know, germane to our climate. It's got to be germane to how the city functions. So, um, you know, if we make an ordinance that, that tries to get more specific, whether it's two inches of asphalt or three inches of asphalt, I think we're going to be upside down. I think we need to rely on our engineers to, 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 um, be able to reasonably provide a list of alternatives to, to asphalt and, um, and to concrete. Also keeping in mind that they're balancing this difficult issue of storm water and water management. So I, I really don't think that that's appropriate to put in a zoning code, um, beyond what we see here. And that's how I arrived at that. D just clarifies, you know, what we mean by, uh, you know, w- w- how this is going to be, uh, how the driveway approaches are going to be handled. If, again, like I mentioned, if you're going to be, um, having a parking facility accessed from a, from a public alley, it's, there's a standard here that, that, that describes how that has to be done. It's got to be done, uh, 12 feet width, you know, from, uh, one street to the other. This, this is, this is something when, um, you know, I, I heard when I first got here a year ago, regarding some developments that were happening off alleys and it just was a little too intense beyond a single family home or duplex. And that was a, a major concern. The alleys just can't handle it. It's like, all right, well, um, we're going to put this in here and see, you know, through our public process if this, if this makes some sense. So again, worked with our engineering team to figure out what would be a reasonable language.
You've got a question. You're, you're talking about public alleys now and a minute ago you were talking about private alleys.
So a, a, a private alley is really, um, it's, it's not, it's not. Tell me, give me an example of a private alley, please.
That's what I'm wondering the question is, but.
So I, I think that, that's a, that would be just a, 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 a surface. If it's, if someone has a private property and there's a, there's a long driveway on it, is that an alley? I mean, alley is, when, at the conclusion of this presentation, I'm, we're going to mention that I'm going to be coming back on seven fifteen um, with a small ordinance that deals with the definitions specifically with alley and parking area. We're making some modification, modifications to the definitions. I couldn't bring it to you this evening because, we decided to write those changes after the public hearing notice was, and this happens to be in a different section of code. So we're going to bring that back on seven fifteen and when we get into the definition of an alley and we get into the definition of a parking area. Let me see if I understand the question here.
Well, just a minute ago you were talking about private alleys and then public alleys. I mean, I'm just, I was just trying to get some clarification.
I know you said that an alley is a, is not a public street.
That's right. Earlier it was an alley is not a public or private street. He wasn't commenting on the definition.
Alleys are public rights of way, but for the purpose of this.
Yeah.
Section of code, alleys are not public streets.
Okay. That, that's the distinction you want to make. Thank you. I, I was, wasn't trying to answer the question.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, thank you for that. We, we want to make really clear that an alley is an alley and a street is a street. They're, they're two separate things. Yeah. Cause it's really hard. Yeah. I, I noticed that was replete through the code. It's, it's like, when you read it, if, if you put the hat on thinking, I want to, I want to ensure that a alley is a street and you put that hat on, you read the code, you can come up and say, yeah, I think the code says now he's a street. And if you put your hat on and say, I really want to make sure I read this, or an alley is not a street, you could also interpret it that way. So this is, it's language intended to clarify that the two are not the same. Yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question at first. Um, so going on to maintenance. It, it's just very straightforward. Uh, city's not responsible for, um, taking care of private property. Or the hard surfacing of alleys, which are public. Lighting, uh, we're just creating a reference to, uh, title eight, which, um, is commonly known as the, is the dark sky, uh, ordinance. So we want to create that clear reference there. A couple of minor cleanups. Wheel blocks. Um, we, you added some clarity here because inevitably there'd be a conversation. When a development application is submitted, there's a drawing depicting and dimensioning the, the parking area and all of wheel stops. And it's this ongoing conversation about, um, really how far can the, can the, uh, the front of a vehicle, the part that's in front of the two front tires overhanging to the sidewalk? These standards are intended to remove that confusion by making sure that, uh, the parking stall is deep enough to accommodate the sidewalk or the walkway that's in front of it without encroaching. So this is much argued over language with our, with our, um, our internal team to sort of war game this, but we're happy to, to do that here with you as well.
Commissioner Benner.
Just to bring up, is that front part, front end parking or rear end parking? Uh, as an example, Sunday, a pickup truck, big pickup truck with the big bumper and the trailer hitch made it impossible to get a stroller between the garbage can and the back of the pickup at Memorial Field.
It's agnostic to whether it's the front or rear. So it applies to both this ordinance.
But I just, so that when they're doing, doing the design work, I mean, that truck was probably four feet.
Yeah.
And so if you put it, design it for three feet or two feet and the pickup backs in, they're still overhanging everything. That's.
You, good, good point. So this is agnostic, whether we're talking about the front or the rear, but keep in mind also that, um, like any, like any regulation, there's a balancing act between how much you want to pave, how much storm drain you want to, you know, create? What, what's the, you know, what's the periodicity of, of a, of a truck that's got a eight feet hanging off the back of its, you know, versus something else? So all of that goes into our thinking. Um, I, I don't know if we want to create a situation where these drive, these parking areas includes a drive aisle in the parking stall become 10 or 20 feet wider for that eventuality. So I think we have to balance it and, and, but I encourage you to read this. If it, if it doesn't strike, if it doesn't strike, let's talk about it. We tried to, um, fix most of what we see as the problem where people pull into the parking stall and they're overhanging that sidewalk in front. Um, and incidentally it's written, so it applies to the back as well. But the, the matter of fact is that there are vehicles out there that've got these long backs behind the wheels and just, I don't know if we want to design our city around that segment of the vehicles. But we, we could talk about this stuff all, all, all night long. I'm, I love talking about parking.
I'd love to sit down with Brandon and we'll talk about it. I can show him some examples, so.
Oh yeah. Jason just showed me a picture just an hour ago of, of, of this, that, that very thing while we were sitting here.
Uh, Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah, thanks. The, um.
Speaking of the mic, please.
Yeah. Thank you. And relative to, uh, uh, some submittals prior to this meeting, the, the notion of, of, uh, shall be provided and maintained was suggested to be added, which raises sort of an interesting question when we talk about the zoning code. Cause the code is one thing, enforcement is another, we oftentimes see, right? Such that is that sort of inherited, meaning you don't have to look too far to see a bunch of non-maintained wheel blocks around.
Well, we go so far as to say front yards, parking lots that were developed a long time. We don't have a property maintenance code.
Yeah.
That I'm aware of in standpoint, and that's a very, very, uh, fraught, um, set of standards to, to put in place. It, 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 there are rare examples where a CUP, a conditional use permit, let's say for where a place of public assembly that's near an arterial street or something, for example, I'm trying to create an example for you. Where the testimony at the hearing is that, you know, it's a new part of town and we're really concerned about, um, the, the maintenance of this parking lot, for example, uh, given, uh, I don't know, fill in the blank, the, the, the nature of way it's been designed for a creative storm gutter, water solution or something. We want to make sure that this is. The planning commission possibly could impose some sort of a operational condition on that use. But I really don't like operational conditions on land use permits. It's either we approve it and the thing gets built and it operates or we don't. Um, I, it's really hard for staff to enforce thou shalt turn off your lights at nine o'clock or thou shall not, you know, park, you know, here or there. So operational conditions are difficult to put on land use permits, but we could. And if you really couldn't make findings until you had some assurance that things were going to be maintained. It's commonly, commonly done in landscaping, like, like, for example, when you initially install landscaping, there's a condition, you know, some cities will put on there. It says, look, your landscaping has got to be installed and bonded for us to ensure it's, you know, it reaches maturity and in which case we return the bond.
That operational governance though has to also be balanced with the private property rights.
Correct. So it's a real sticky wicket.
Got it.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's very difficult to see this property maintenance type things embedded in zoning ordinance.
So I guess another way to say it is, it's sort of hard to enforce because at some point in time, the wheel block is going to.
Cheerio rate.
Faster than the asphalt is. And they were both put in at the same time, probably in some cases.
Yeah.
Such that it's, there's really no backstop to say, hey, if you install it, you gotta make sure it stays installed.
That's right.
Got it.
That's a property maintenance.
Explains a lot. Yep.
Yep. But great question. That's a, that's a great question. Let's see, we talked, we just a little bit here on the striping, that's very straightforward. Screening and landscaping, really not a lot done here at all. Just clarifying, we have to meet the ADA. Sort of redundant, but just for clarity. The design and dimensional standards. Again, this is where the big ticket item was to include some clarity on these, these exhibits, the prior exhibits, the ones existing eligible. So thi- this is really going to help a lot, and thank you to Brandon for, for generating these for us. And then the, the minimum and maximum surface parking space requirements. Expanding the exempt area. Adding requirements for residential uses based on square footage. That's, that's the, the beginning and end of that.
Chairman, I, I got a couple of.
I got a question, too.
Commissioner Torpe.
A couple of things, and I'm sorry, but could you scroll back up? And it's the over 1,200, under 1,200, and I know this is like going to roll eyes, but can we change one of them to equal to or less than 1,200 square feet? Because you, 1,200 square feet itself has no provision.
I'm sorry, which section are you looking at? I know what you're talking about, but where exactly?
Going up. Keep scrolling back, right there. So it's not part of your changes. It's in the existing code.
Oh, right here.
But we've got over and under. And you don't have, one of them doesn't say equal to or less than, or something. I.
Okay, which one do you want it to be?
I don't care. I, I don't care, but I don't want someone coming in someday and saying, I have a 1,200 square foot, exactly 1,200 square foot dwelling unit, and therefore I have no parking requirement whatsoever.
It just, this just wouldn't be complete unless you suggested what the language would be. You get to pick which one.
I, I would suggest make the second one greater than.
Yeah. Okay. Got it.
And then the other, and it's just a general thing, but the other is, what do you do with fractions of spaces required? I mean, do you round up? Is it the, the last full one, and if it comes to 17.3?
Typically round. You typically round. That's common. Do we need to add that in here?
I don't know. I just, if it's common, don't add it, but I, I didn't know.
It's, it's really common. Especially when you, you know, planners are in charge, because we just don't do math. So what's rounding is our best friend.
There you go. Okay.
Yeah. Great, great catch. That just tells me right there, this has been thoroughly reviewed. I love it.
Not yet, not yet. Commissioner Benner.
Well, I just have one question on in this and parts of it here, you've changed and put parking areas. Then you use parking facilities. Are they interchangeable?
Fantastic. I'm going to come back on the 15th with the ordinance that does exactly that, makes them interchangeable. It was driving me nuts. So the reason why I couldn't put it in here because that is, that definition is not in the parking ordinance, it's in 9.1 of the code. The, the way zoning ordinance is typically organized is you have this definition section that applies to everything throughout. And I noticed this hearing for 9.5, which is just parking. But it was driving me bananas, and so I rewrote it in the definition section, so I'm coming back. So when we go to city council, should both of these pass, we'll bake that together and bring them one. But we do exactly that, make the area and facility synonymous and interchangeable. Great catch.
I'll bring it up later.
Okay.
The one catch I had at the very beginning, but we went past it too fast, but go ahead.
Okay.
Bill, carry on.
Okay, yes, sir. So we've got the table. Thank you all for your patience here as we, as we, as we get through this. Parking credits, adding some obvious language in there. Apparently, it's like the one bad apple, right? So one bad apple creates a, a rule. I guess this has happened where backup space shall be provided on private property within an access aisle or other area not otherwise designated as a parking space. For various reasons, that's some clarity is required, required there. Nothing changing on loading. The in lieu is intended to do what we've been talking about. We have our resident in lieu expert Jason here with us tonight, so we want to get into, you know, any of the details, but again, you're allowed to, you're allowed to pay an in lieu fee in several scenarios. And if you, if you, I think it's, because it's important and it's big, and we're at the end of this thing, let's, let's read each one of them, make sure we understand. Is that okay, Chair? Okay. So the provisions may be utilized in lieu of providing parking in the following situations. Okay, new residential development within the parking exempt areas defined in 9.5, 1F. Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear. So you can do the in lieu fee if you're a new residential development within that area. Okay, number two, non-residential development and residential development outside of that area. In other words, this is a citywide applicable thing if you want to use it. It's, and that's, and that's been part of the code for a long time. Number three, non-residential development within the exempt area shall be exempt from this section. So it's really important, we're not changing stuff for commercial development downtown. And then number four, this was added on recently, a parking demand analysis, as we talked about earlier, shall not be eligible to determine the required number of parking spaces for the purpose of establishing an in lieu payment. In other words, if your parking demand has 20 spaces and you do an in lieu, you do a study that says, well, my real parking demand is 10, we're not going to calculate the in lieu payment off the 10, we're going to calculate off the code provision of 20. So I'm going to give full credit to Jason Welker for thinking of that because it was a great, a great catch. That would have been the proverbial loophole. So we added that in. So I understood Commissioner Benner to have a question regarding something that was earlier in the ordinance.
Oh, just back, way back in the table of your off-street parking and loaning facilities, you've got a 2015 date in there? I think that would, isn't that 2000?
So let me see, it's one of the tables that, what we.
Page 13, I think it is, or something like that.
Let's take a look here. So I think I know what you're talking about. So there's some footnotes to these things.
This goes back, I think, to the staff report, maybe? Yeah. You could write, yeah, in the staff report.
Oh, it's in the staff report?
Yeah.
Then that, that's just, that's just the staff report. What matters really here is what's in the ordinance. Are you talking about the, the language at the bottom that says, you know, ordinance XYZ, such and such a date?
Uh, it was all the dates going down, listing everything that was going on. And one of the dates, everything was 2004, 24, 25, except one of them, 2015.
That's because that was the, I think I know what you're talking about now. Let me pull up, see if I can pull up this. Let's see if I can pull up this. No, it's not it. Of all the things I don't have up is the staff report. Jason, do you have the staff report handy?
That's okay. I'll show you later.
Well, no, I'm going to, I'm going to have to see it right now. Just give me one second. Oh, the reason why the 2015 data is there is because I wanted just for the, to be clear with the record that, you know, parking's been talked about for, on and off for a long, long time in Sandpoint. Even in 2015, that, which was the, the precedent to the, the current effort to do a parking management plan, there was work done, and that actually was built upon something that was done earlier. I, I didn't go back in the fullness of time to find out when we started talking about this, but I put that in there just as a, a statement that this is, as a reflection that this has been, you know, really sort of talked about and been managed a lot. And, and I also think it's important for this reason. We're talking about zoning. This is going to change, okay? Someone's going to be here in a number of years from now that's going to say, we, we need to make some amendments and changes, and we all have to be open to that because this is a value expression that we're making today, and tomorrow's value expression could be different. So I just want to say that for the record, and that's probably why you, this stuff is constantly amended. So.
Thank you.
But with that, Chair, I think that concludes everything I had. We've made mention, in fact, I'm coming back on the 15th of July to talk very briefly, it's very, very narrow ordinance, to talk about some definitions. I guess great minds think alike. Commissioner Benner, we, the, the exact same things, alleys and parking area definition were the other two that are coming back.
Chairman, I, I've.
Mr. Torpe.
One more thing. Section 18. Under limit, under limitations, if I read it correctly, what is proposed applies to development outside the parking exempt area. That's in the first line of subsection G. And then in the parking plan itself, page nine, and I'm not sure these are contradictory, I'm just not, I guess I'm just not sure if there needs to be some reconciliation. And on page nine of the parking plan, it reads that within the, it, it, it's exactly the same thing, except it applies within the exempt area, not outside the exempt area.
Where, can you, where's, what's the language in the parking plan that you're referring to?
It's on page nine. That's all I wrote down.
Where the maps are?
Page nine of that. Sorry, it's going to take me a second here to find it. Because the pages are kind of obscured by the other thing.
I just don't know if you mean PDF page nine or.
No, it's, it's the real, yeah, it's the, it's page nine of the document.
What's the language you're, you're identifying, Mr. Torpe? I see. Okay, off-street parking requirements for residential development in the downtown parking exempt zone may be offset by paying parking in lieu fees.
But it's the 50%, if it's greater than 50%, it's got to go to the planning and zoning?
I have not updated the parking management plan since we updated the ordinance.
Shame on you, Jason.
Yes, I am ashamed.
So that's all I'm getting at. That one refers to the 50% rule for within and the others without, so.
I think we, we've been working on this ordinance until just a week or so ago. So I think it's possible that, after we've decided to.
I, I appreciate, I, I appreciate that. Could it be both? I mean, why?
Well, what, what they can, they will do is reconcile the parking management plan to match the ordinance after there's a recommendation by you.
Right.
Okay, so in, in the, in, in the proposed language in code here, subsection G, this provision, this 50%, I'll call it the 50% rule.
Sure.
Only applies outside the parking exempt area. So within the parking exempt area, if somebody wants to provide no parking and 100% you know, satisfied within lufies, it doesn't go through anybody's approval. Right?
That's correct.
Is that, is that, I just don't know. I mean, you do, I don't know why.
Let me just, let me just read it really quickly again. I mean, I'm going to focus on this, just for, so just give me a second. I'll tell you exactly what this means. We have a collection of ordinances and we have a collection of standards that essentially deregulate parking in, in downtown. And that's well understood. There's an exempt area, there's, it's not, it's not a requirement. When you go out into, beyond the downtown and you're in residential areas, other areas, the, the nature of that change is going to be much more stark than it would be in downtown. That's, that's understood and has been regulated as an exempt area for a long time. So if you're going to take advantage of this provision, that's going to have an urban form component to it, obviously, because it'd be reduction. When you get above a certain amount, we're now in neighborhoods, we're now in other areas that aren't that held with such, you know, understanding by the community as exempt, and that's really what led to our conversation to, to modify this, to just let the downtown be one way and the other areas different. Does that make sense? And, and if, and if that's, if, if that's not, if that doesn't meet with the commissioner's, you know, desires, then let's, let's, let's change it, but that's what's behind it, and thank you for pointing that out.
All this does is require some review and approval of the planning commission, that must be us.
That's right. You're, you're talking about neighborhood settings.
Right.
That, that, that kind of thing to me is.
So we'd, we'd want to look at outside the parking exempt area, we want to look at where these people are going to park.
That's right, and have, have a little bit more discussion about it.
They're going to ruin everybody else's life if they start doing that. Right, okay.
That's, that's exactly right.
Okay.
So it would not be a staff decision. It's not administrative.
That's right.
Okay.
Within the parking exempt area, we are proposing that the payment of, of in lieu fees is allowed by right.
Correct.
Up to 100%.
Up to 100%.
Up to 100%.
If a developer.
Over 50, you got to.
A developer wishes to cut us a check at $25,000 per space required by code, that this kind of fits with the, the, the overall, what are the overall objectives of the, of the parking management plan, which is to generate revenue for future public parking improvements? That, that, that parking in lieu fee revenue can only be allocated towards future parking lot improvements. So that is something we actually want to encourage, right? We want to encourage developers to take advantage of that in, in lufy so that we can build that nest egg to provide a parking structure 10, 20 years down the road. But you're, thank you for pointing out the inconsistency between the, the ordinance and the parking management plan. I do need to update the parking management plan.
And I'm just going to ask a question. Is the 50% a good number? I mean, for, for that provision, subsection H, you know, out, out in the neighborhood somewhere.
So you, you tell us, what, what, what comes to mind when you think of that? It could be any number you want to put in there.
I, I don't know, I'm just thinking of some of the, some of the projects we've been asked to look at, and, you know, if, if they wanted to pay all that money in lieu of making those parking spaces available on their property so they could build more units, I don't, I mean, you know, whatever. I, in some places, I don't know where they'd park.
Would, would that get them into an area where they wouldn't have to have any?
No, that's an area that's, it's not in the exempt zones. We're talking about out in the neighborhoods and, or out in industrial area. So we're talking about if you want to satisfy that with the in lieu fee.
So they have a right up to.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a check on that to make sure that it's, you, you, that the city can still function in that area with, with that in lieu fee being paid. And so having, the, the idea is that you have a, this body, look at that if you're going over 50%. But if, if going over 25% makes more sense to you, you know, you really want to make sure that we just leave parking the way it is. This, the, the idea of being able to use the in lieu fee citywide has been in the books for, for a long time.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
But the idea of using, you know, 50% or more, this is just a, I think a in deference to what I think we were sensing as staff, is your comfort level with some of these rules and just having an additional layer of community check on this. And that, that's, that's what it's about. I mean, plain and simple. And you, you being that community check. If, if you think that number should be 30% or 20% or 70%, great discussion to have, happy to take, take your, you know, the commission's lead on that.
But I, I just want to make sure I understand it, that that provision as written gives, it is a right. It doesn't require anyone's approval. It's a right on the part of the, of the applicant to forego the construction or provision of 50% of the parking. So long as they pay that, whatever it is that they got to pay.
That's right.
It's a right. Nobody can say you can't do it.
You got that right.
So I'm just wondering if the people that show up here, you know, what they're going to think if we can't do anything about it and there's all these cars going to be all over the street where.
That's precisely why we should have these meetings to talk about. This is a, this, it, these are important, these are important. This is urban form functioning city stuff, and this is really why it's important to, you, you're, you're in your balancing act now, trying to visualize, and it's, and it's hard because you're, you're trying to visualize, you know, scenarios that maybe you can't visualize right now. Because, you know, all this stuff is highly contextual, but I will submit that has been in the ordinance. I, I'm not aware of it being used. Have you, are you aware, Jason, has it ever been used before?
No. I, outside of the parking exempt zone, I am not aware of in lieu fees having been paid. And there's no in lieu fees within the parking exempt zone, so there, there's a tiny bit of money in that fund from years and years ago before the parking exempt zone existed downtown. In lieu fees, I believe, were an option back then. But it's not something that developers have used much.
Lots of ways to look at it. There could be a development that comes in that wants to add a couple extra units. It's going to help make the project work. It's next, it's located next to or nearby a bike facility or a, or a stop, bus stop. There's, there's, you know, there's, there's, there's any number of scenarios where you say, well, I'm glad we have that provision in there because, you know, I think the project's a good project. But if that number of 50% is making you a little uncomfortable, I fully understand, we can, we can add a different number in.
Because it looks like the original provision applied to business. And it's been struck there. In the event a business. there in the event a business intends to satisfy, right? I mean.
That, yeah, we struck that because.
Right, no, but I'm thinking now it applies to, you know, some condominium thing somewhere or whatever, I, you know.
I, I'm curious to know the commission's thoughts on the ability by right to exempt yourself from all parking requirements by paying the fees in the downtown commercial zone, in the, in the, in the otherwise exempt zone, the non-commercial exempt, or sorry, the commercial exempt zone. What are your thoughts on that? I, I guess maybe an example, uh, if, if a small residential development took place that only had, let's say, two thousand square feet of floor space of residential, this might be a redevelopment of some historic building downtown with two small apartments upstairs, for example, their parking requirement would be two spaces. They have no land to provide parking on because their building takes up the entire parcel that they own. They, they obviously aren't going to provide parking. They have to pay the in-Lufi at this point. Do you want to require that applicant to come to the planning commission to ask permission to pay down more than one of their two spaces that are required? That's a realistic example. We're not gonna see a whole lot of fifty unit developments downtown, but we are likely in the next ten to twenty years to see a whole lot of two or three unit developments downtown if we see some of that redevelopment. It, is it in your interest to require that applicant to come before you and say, may I please pay for two in-Lufi spaces instead of one in-Lufi space? Or can that be their right when it's, when it's in some cases necessary to pay that in-Lufi, just to pay that in-Lufi? You see, that's, I'm trying to give you like a real world, um, application of how this might look in the future.
Okay, well, right now it's a hundred percent, right?
A hundred percent exempt.
And subsection G does not apply to the example you just gave whatsoever.
That's right, it doesn't.
Right.
I bet it would be the same scenario if it's over fifty percent.
Yep, that's, that's right.
So this would be any of the things we've looked at in the past twelve months that are outs, well, that are outside.
Right.
City core.
Somebody could, someone could come and say, I wanna buy down the requirement.
Everything.
That's right.
Can, can we also keep in mind that there are two other ways to reduce your requirement outside of the parking exempt zone? There's the shared parking reduction.
And the demand analysis.
And there's a demand analysis.
Right.
My guess is most developers are gonna pay three thousand dollars and have an engineer do a demand analysis to reduce their parking requirement before they pay twenty-five thousand dollars to reduce their parking requirement by a single space.
That's right.
Or they're gonna find a neighbor, a church that's only open on Sundays and get an agreement to use their parking lot for six days a week. Like there are, the, the in-Lufi's, let's be honest, are probably never gonna be paid outside of the downtown parking exemption.
So why, so why are they there? It's just in a, a whole, because we have the fees, this is a way to have, uh, some language about how they could be used and managed by the city. I, I really think Jason's right with this is probably not likely to be the first thing that's sought, but when we're in the business of creating some rules, it's nice to have these carve-outs so that the rules don't, aren't quite as, um, difficult to adhere to, you know, especially parking, right? What are ways you can get out of having to produce the spot? And what's reasonable for the community to do that? That's really what this is all about.
Okay.
It's a, it's a great discussion though. I mean, this is, this is, um, th- this specific language was talked about in twenty-eighteen, if I understood the staff report correctly. So again, it's, I think this is something every time this ordinance gets looked at, I think this is probably one of those things we talk about. I just haven't seen it used.
Yeah.
And yes, just, uh, keeping in mind, we do have audience members that might wanna weigh in now.
Okay, we can proceed with the public hearing. Any, any more discussion what we can have after, after the hearing is closed anyway? Uh, rules are still in place that were previously stated, uh, for public testimony. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak or have their hands raised on Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Molly O'Reilly.
Molly, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Great discussion. I enjoyed hearing it. I liked your suggestion of changing the bicycle parking from four to twenty, oh, Molly O'Reilly, city resident, from four bikes for twenty spaces to one to five. I think that's an excellent idea and if somebody has fifteen or ten parking spots, it'll be clear that it applies. So thank you. Good idea. And the bike standards may change, the parking standards. We have more e-bikes than when they were originally done and they're wider and if people start using cargo bikes, that's a whole different thing. So incorporating it by reference, I think the standards is really good and, and thank you, staff, and thank you. And, um, I'm confused whether the fees are set by council or whether they're, the in-Lufi's are in this ordinance because council might decide someday, ugh, we don't want them this high or we want them way higher. So I think they should be set by council. And at one point, staff talked about using some of the in-Lufi's for funding the spot bus, which makes a lot of sense. If you provide alternatives, that, that helps. So, um, I hope that's not all set, that it's just for the parking structure that they were talking about when we moved here in nineteen ninety-nine. And remember that what you provide for is what you get. If there's a whole lot of parking, always, you'll get cars. I walk downtown because there's not a whole lot of parking and I, it'll be faster and easier for me. And we have a bunch of bike parking downtown, we will have more. The Ped Bike Committee will be looking at where to put about twenty-one more bike staples on the, out on the streets and doing an inventory of what's there. So we, we are working on that and thank you. As I said, really nice discussion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, last call, any, any members of the public who have not testified who wish to do so, this will be your last opportunity before the hearing is closed. Okay, moving on, hearing is now closed. Commissioners, you may ask questions of staff during deliberation. And we've done quite a bit of, uh, discussion, so I think, I'm hoping.
We're discussed out.
I think, well, I mean, we can just have a motion right away if you feel like it. I'm ready. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Simmons.
So I think we captured some, for lack of a better term, cleanup language and some changes along the way. So, uh, we can make a motion to approve with those in light of making those.
Okay. With the changes.
Yeah, and I, just, just so we're, if it may be helpful, Chair, um, I wrote down four things. One is to, to change the ratio to one to five instead of five to twenty in that relevant portion. To add the bicycle language, including the reference to the, um, council resolution that I mentioned as part of my presentation. There was the section nine, five, three, we're gonna have some attorney language, attorney's assistance in writing language regarding.
You don't need to change language. What I was telling him is that can be cured.
Right.
In the shared.
Oh, that can be cured, that can be cured in the actual agreement itself.
Got it.
And then, and then lastly, so it would be three things, lastly is nine, five, fifteen, talking about whether it's over, um, twelve hundred or not. So those three things are, are what we talked about this evening.
Got it. Um, I, the, the twenty-five thousand dollar in-Lufi.
Oh.
Is that, how does that adjust?
So the, the, the ordinance as it rests today had a, had a fee established. We're striking that and having that, um, become just part of a council resolution that gets updated, um, from time to time with CPI or other indices. It's really not a good idea to have those things in an ordinance.
Yeah.
Each refer to a council adopted fee schedule. They're trying to consolidate all the fees in one place and then that gets evaluated, you know, annually.
Yeah.
So I have a question for us.
Mr. Torpey.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm the one who raised, I don't know, a stink or not about that fifty percent thing. Is anyone else concerned? Given that it may never apply, then I guess nobody should worry about whatever number we have in there, but in the event someday in the next lifetime it would apply, is, is, are you comfortable with half the parking requirement being thrown out in the neighborhood wherever this development is?
And there's only like, you can't just build a twentyplex on a, I'm sorry. You can't just build twenty units on a single family, uh, a single family resi, I mean, lot in, in my neighborhood, like where I live, if there's a lot next to me, I can't build whatever I want there. There's like restrictions based on, on the code already. I mean, if I'm, I mean.
No, but clearly within the zoning, if somebody wants to build a hundred townhouses.
Yeah.
We, we've seen, we, we've seen developments where they haven't built as many units of housing as they could in, in what we have seen, clearly. I mean, um, and if someone made that choice to limit the number of dwelling units because they had to provide parking someplace and said to themselves, gee, I can make more money if I build more units and have less parking and spend twenty-five thousand bucks and ship it out to the street next, you know, wherever it is. That's my question. That's the thing I'm thinking of.
I mean, personally, I would assume that somebody who's gonna pay the in-Lufi is gonna sell these units, not rent them for, I mean, not, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about like eighty units that's gonna be developed, you know, on church or whatever, or, oh, sorry.
I'm talking, I'm not talking about downtown.
No, I know, I'm just saying like, but imagine he's, someone who's trying to do that outside of the exempt zone, you know, and I don't know, farther up Pine or something, like near where Astor Garden Center is now. I mean, that's like a, almost an acre, you could build something pretty big there. But I mean, if you're gonna spend that kinda money on twenty-five grand per parking unit, you're probably gonna wanna sell those units and people aren't gonna wanna buy them if you don't have parking, I, I would assume.
Okay.
I mean, that would be, I mean, there's a different calculus for the developer based on renting versus, versus selling. I don't know.
Mr. Bennett.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, without any further really information on it, I, I think fifty percent's a good, a good starting spot.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Simmons.
Yeah, I don't know, I, and I'm, I don't, this, Mr. Torpey, he brings up a good point such that at that garden center there, there would be nothing to stop somebody from building a very, very population dense housing facility such, and no parkings required. They could buy their way out of the whole thing. And that pushes it all sort of northward. There would be no backstop against that.
And there would be requirement from the, there would be approval from this body.
Not, up to fifty percent, there'd be none.
Yeah, up to fifty percent there, there would be. So, I mean, you could, uh, you know, I have a hard time wrapping my head around what that looks like, but is that, is that right? I'm sorta with you, I can't really quite wrap my head around whether that's sort of the right or wrong provision.
I, I, I don't know, I just, I could picture, and maybe you're right, that it's never gonna happen and then if it's never gonna happen, why do we even care what?
Yeah, that's right.
But I, I just think sometimes we think something's never gonna happen and it does. So, you know, cause we can't always predict the future, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, one of the first applicants I remember hearing, the, the parking was, was kind of an issue and they were, they weren't building all that they could on the lot, but it was really close and they needed to have a through street for some reason. And so the street actually took up a lot of the parking lot. And so it actually made it to where the number of parking spaces was actually difficult with, with, uh, you know, snow removal and, you know, storage and all that and then trash and, you know, everything all put together, it made it to where I could see them wanting to buy out of a couple. But it was also like twenty-four units on a fairly big city lot. So I wouldn't think that would be a huge difference, you know? And, and I think they're not gonna get down to fifty percent, like you're talking a half a million dollars or something, which, I don't know, maybe, maybe it makes sense. But then I think the, this body would still have the chance to say, that doesn't make sense. So we're not gonna allow fifty percent?
Would we? I mean, I, I understood that to be a right. So we wouldn't be able to say, you can't pay off fifty percent.
It's a right inside the, the exempt zone. Outside the exempt zone, you have to come before this body.
If it's more than fifty percent.
As it's written now, outside the exempt zone, you can buy right, buy down fifty percent of your required parking.
Okay.
Inside the exempt zone, by right, you can buy down a hundred percent of your parking. I would also just point out that, that being as the draft resolution does not, or sorry, the ordinance does not include dollar amounts for the actual in-Lufi. Council may choose to establish different in-Lufi's within the parking exempt zone and outside the parking exempt zone. If you think about a project out by the airport, I mean, the, as you might've seen in the appendix of the parking management plan, the, the twenty-five thousand dollars was arrived at as a recommended in-Lufi for downtown because that's roughly equivalent with the cost of building structured parking. You know, if you're, if you're doing like greenfield development and you're, you wanna buy your way out of one parking space in a five-acre parcel somewhere where ten new homes are being built or something, twenty-five thousand dollars is insane, no one's gonna pay that, right? You're just gonna find a place to put one parking spot and you're gonna pave it for three thousand dollars, whatever it costs to pave a parking spot. So it might make sense for council to adopt a, something closer to our current in-Lufi for development outside of that downtown core. As it's worded, you know, we don't distinguish between commercial and residential in this ability to buy down using the Lufi's outside of the commercial or downtown core. You know, an example Bill and I were just exploring here was, uh, this is a real world example, I lived in South Sandpoint, I had a, a seven thousand square foot lot, um, could never have built an ADU in my backyard because I did not have a place to put one off-street parking space that's required in code for that ADU. That was actually a big consideration I had in why I never pursued that as an option. There was just no place for me to put parking in. My, my backyard's not accessible from my front yard, you can't drive into it. So it'd be pedestrian access, but my, um, my driveway only accommodated two vehicle spaces, what, is what my house required. I had no place to put a third parking space. This would allow, uh, somebody looking to build an ADU, for example, just to pay in in-Lufi, build their ADU and then that whoever lives in that ADU just parks on the street. Cause let's be honest, most of our residential neighborhoods have, neighborhoods have ample street parking available. If you, we, we think a lot about, you know, big developments and buying down dozens of spaces, but this code could apply to a single-family household that wants to do an ADU or an expansion that might increase their parking requirement by one.
And, uh, in our ADU discussions, that has been one of the bigger topics of, uh, you know, should we, should we take it out because it seems like a lot to ask for something that we're trying to encourage? So, yeah, I think that's probably the biggest use that I could see where it would come up.
I gotta answer your question, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mitchell.
About the ADUs, so like what, if you're in a single family and your square footage is, only requires one parking space and then ADU requires another parking space, you've reached the fifty percent threshold, do we have to hear that?
The way, the way the ordinance is drafted is it's more than fifty percent.
Plus it, okay, it's fifty-one.
More than fifty percent, yeah. So if you're asking for more than fifty percent. So, uh, Mrs. Jones coming here for her ADU would not be before the commission.
It's, sorry, it's interesting though, because if your parking requirement is one for a residential development and you don't have space for that parking space, now you have to come to the planning commotion and ask, commission and ask permission to pay the in-Lufi. Or you could decide right now that, you know, it's by right and anybody can pay that in-Lufi. But as it's written, it's true that a, a project, a, a small house on a small lot that doesn't have room on that lot to provide a parking space, but there's street parking available, would have to come before planning and zoning and ask for permission to pay the in-Lufi. Cause they're asking to pay down a hundred percent of their parking requirement.
That seems negative.
Well, this is why we're discussing this, this, these are scenarios that Bill and I did not discuss when we drafted this. So good thing we're having it now.
Well, I think that's what I was getting at earlier, is, is there a route to where you could get to where you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to have any parking for any residents? Which that would, that would qualify. And I, I feel like that one would be kind of a, maybe a no-brainer, you know? Like we're gonna allow that, like nine out of ten times, I would think. So, yeah, do they need to come before us to okay that for one space?
Well, I think it's easy enough to write language that says, yeah, for, you know, Well, I think it's easy enough to write language that says, yeah, for, you know, looking at the language right here on that section, because it is a, thankfully, it's a small little section, we're talking about section G limitations, you know, other than an ADU. These things apply. You know what I mean, just, you know, that could be issue number four, for example, that we carry forth, should this move on to council, that other than an ADU, and, and.
Or single-family residents, like Jason.
Or a single-family resident, you could say, other than a single-family resident, you know, you know, if you're asking for more than 50% in the, outside the exempt area, then you've got to move forward. That way you just avoid those situations where somebody just wants to build a house and they've got to come before the planning commission. I, I would suggest that we have a lot of exemptions here that are based on the, on a duplex, um, already baked into the code that we've reviewed. So I, I would suggest that duplex plus ADU would be, just kind of keep that threshold of exemption moving forward. That's sort of the threshold we've, we've been talking about, so. It's a great, it's a great thing to discuss. If, if commission is amenable to that, I have it listed here as number four, you know, I'll just put greater than duplex plus ADU. And I'll work on the language, um, should this move forward to city council. I think, this is exactly what, um, we should be doing is, is getting into the details like this and throwing example.
Okay, I see a lot of satisfied minds, and I think we're ready for a motion. I'm definitely ready for a motion. And I, I'd like the, I like the changes that we've been able to come up with, it's been a very good discussion. I think it's better, for sure.
No, we have a motion on the table while we have started.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if, uh, uh, this Commissioner Simmons, if council could remind me of the language I want to use here.
It, it's a motion to recommend approval to city council.
Yeah, motion to recommend, um, approval to city council with the language identified tonight.
It's been moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Simmons, seconded by Commissioner Banner. Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Torpe.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunkle.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Banner.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion passes.
All right. Good job, um. We have no old or new business to discuss. Now we would move on with, uh, final item, any general matters that staff would like to bring to the attention of the commission at this time?
Yeah, just a little preview of what's coming up. We are not going to have a July 2nd meeting, there's July 1st meeting, which would normally be our meeting day. We will have a July 14th, 15th. My math not good. We will have a July 15th meeting, that's gonna be a very busy night, I think we have possibly three public hearings that night. One of which will be a rehearing of the area of impact, just as a matter of update, that was presented to the Bonner, this is, watch it on YouTube if you're interested, it was up, uploaded today. The Bonner County Board of Commissioners reviewed the areas of impact for all the cities in Bonner County. Thankfully, mercifully, Dover and Sandpoint were the first two and was probably a five or six-hour meeting. So we were out of there in two. I presented our area of impact that was approved by this body and went on to council. Great discussion, several members of the public, mostly Dover, people in the Dover area of impact were there to speak. Uh, there might have been one person in the Sandpoint area of impact who were there to speak. The commissioners had a lot of, uh, good questions for myself and Claire Marley, the planning, contract planner for Dover. And ultimately, um, the commissioners made the motion to direct planning staffs for both cities to read the code more literally, the, the state statute more literally. Insofar as the, uh, areas of impact must be, must only include areas in the unincorporated county that are very likely to be annexed into the city within the next five years. Now, I think we all agree that all, all the way out to Upland is not very likely to be, but we did dramatically shrink our area of impact by 80%. The direction we've been given now is to shrink it even more, to only include, um, literally areas that are very likely to be annexed within the next five years. So we will bring a revised map to you in a few weeks, um, for your review, which will then go back to council, hopefully at the first meeting in August. And then back to the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, um, in the fall, so that they can get that adopted before the legislative deadline later this year, December. Yeah. So look forward to that, and there's a couple other public hearings related to other land use matters that you'll hear on Jan, July 15th. Yeah, have a great holiday between now and then.
Can't wait for that area of impact meeting.
It's great.
That'll be the highlight of the year, for sure. Okay, any more, uh, topics for discussion from commissioners or staff? Okay, well, no, no further business before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at 7:45 PM.